Welcome to this meeting of the Milton Planning Board on December 14. I'm Alex Whitehead, the chairman, and why don't we go around the table and introduce ourselves, and Mr. Clark can go last, and go.
April Limerow, member.
Lauren Masser, Assistant Town Planner.
Denny Swenson, member.
Cheryl Togayis, member.
William Clark, Planning Director.
We're going to meet again on the 28th and see whether or not we can get a quorum.
I will not be here.
Oh, I won't be here either.
We're going to hope for a quorum. What we have to do on the 28th is, I think, with respect to 333 Brushhill Road, we have to, in the next, design instructions to the landscape architect. In other words, if we were hiring a landscape architect to do landscaping at our house, we would have to tell the landscape architect what we wanted, rather than just say, "Go do a landscape." So, what happened? Oh. So, in the next two weeks, people should put down their thoughts about what sort of a design we want the landscape architect to do, and render them to Mr. Clark or to Lauren. We'll ask the developer and Mr. Ute to offer their thoughts, and then we will -- one of our missions on the 28th will be to develop instructions to the landscape architect. And then we're going to meet again on January 11th. There are no minutes to be approved, as far as I know? No.
That's correct.
Now, we're going to -- we have a covenant on Wentworth Farms, and the signature copy is there. And this has been reviewed by town council, as required by our decision, and town council advises that it's ready to be signed. Is this a fair statement, Lauren?
Is this a fair statement, Bill, you spoke with town council?
Yes.
All right.
You have a scanned copy of the document. Mrs. McGettrick has the original and can answer your questions accordingly.
This is not an original in the file?
No, I just gave the original to Lauren, and she now has given it to you.
All right, you've given it. Okay, do you -- I hate to steal your thunder, why don't you describe what it is that we've got here?
This is a restrictive covenant that can be used as a substitute for a cash bond or a surety bond, and this project requires one of those three as security, that the developer will complete the infrastructure that will serve the lots. Even though it's going to be a private road, the special permit does require that there be some kind of bond or surety. And the developer chose to do this restrictive covenant on the lots, at least for now. He has the option, it's written into the covenant, of coming back to you later and saying, "Well, now I think I'll do the cash bond or the surety, and I'd like you to release the covenant," and there's a mechanism for doing that. You do that by a vote of the board. So while this covenant's in effect, those two lots are restricted by the covenant, and they'd be the last two lots. You'd have to release this in order to sell those lots.
Okay, and we have one copy to sign, and so we're going to keep it, and Bill will give you a copy.
I have to record it when you're done.
Okay, we're going to --
Eventually.
You're going to entrust it to Ms. McGettrick to record?
Yes, and she will scan it and send us back a scanned copy. As soon as the registry will put a stamp on it, we'll have it.
Okay. Do they do that right away, or do they send it off?
They do it -- they'll give me -- if I want, they'll give me a copy of the first page, which shows the recording information, so I'll return that to you, and then when I get the original back, I'll have it sent -- I prefer to have it sent to my office, just to make sure it comes back, and then I'll deliver it to you. You'll get the original eventually.
You can scan it before you go to the registry.
All right.
Oh, sure.
That's good enough for me.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to sign it, and everyone else is going to sign it, too. We don't have to maintain our previous order. So Cheryl, why don't you go second?
Wow, I'm getting bumped up. That's an honor.
Can we go through the piece on Wentworth Farms and the change of ownership, too?
Okay, let's just finish this. Well, you want Mr. Furze to sign it on Monday, or don't you care? Or do we want Mr. Furze to sign? I think we'd better ask him to sign it on Monday.
I think it's okay. I mean --
I can bring it to him Friday night.
It'll be fine.
I have an arrangement to do Friday night with him with these.
Why don't we have him sign this also, just because the covenant is something that he is quite insistent upon?
Okay.
All right. Now, you say that there is a proposed change of ownership of the property. Linda Hamilton currently owns it?
Yes, current owner's Linda Hamilton, and what she was planning to do is to put a number of properties, a number of real estate interests, into a family trust. So it will still be the Hamilton family. Instead of being a sole owner, Linda Hamilton, it will be a trust. I don't have the specific name of the trust for you tonight, but I can tell you that it will be an irrevocable trust. It's going to be created, and it'll be there. It's permanent. And I will get the name to the planning board. They're trying to do this before the end of December. It's part of a state planning --
So that would -- if we can get a quorum on the 28th, we could do it then?
You could, as long as you tell me in principle that you think it's okay.
Except we need a -- we need --
But you might have --
Since it's a special permit, we probably need four votes.
Yes, and the other problem is, what if you don't have a quorum? So, I mean, what you could do is do a contingent vote, providing I give you the name, you know, before the end of December, because -- or you could wait, but the trouble is, if you don't, let's see.
Look, I understand --
In order to do the change, in order to convey, they need your approval.
Tax years and the new tax code, which probably will --
Who knows?
So, okay, I think that I'd be willing to entertain a motion that the owner of Wentworth Farms be, now that we've got this covenant ensuring completion, that it could be transferred to a family trust, of which she's the trustee?
I don't -- I know there will be one trustee who is an independent trustee.
It's Burke.
I have -- James, I gave you the name, I think. It's in the letter. James Buckley.
Buckley, Buckley.
There will be an independent trustee. I don't know who the other trustees -- I don't have any of the documents from the attorney who's doing the trust, which is frustrating. I had hoped to have them by tonight. If you have -- is that an issue for you? It's an irrevocable trust, so, you know.
Well, I understand. We'd like to know a little bit about it. Why don't we make it subject to review, subject to approval by --
For the chairman.
I hate to say town council, because it wouldn't happen by the end of the year, by me, I guess.
Yeah, fine.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. So that does it?
So I just want to make sure I give you the information that you need. I want to give you the name. I had asked, of course, for the address for the trust. You need an address.
Do they need as much as you can?
And the trustees. Okay, all right. I mean, that's the minimum, though, I think, right? That's what I asked for.
I would say so.
Okay. All right.
And --
If they're really going to do this by the end of December, they have to have these documents, so that I can provide you more information, so, you know. And if it doesn't happen by the end of December, then your vote isn't critical.
And what sort of a signature do you need to record it? Or is it just a transfer?
Well, they will be transferring ownership to the trust, so they'll have to record that, but I need your vote to approve it.
They'd do a deed, and then they'd record the deed?
They will.
Okay, and they would just recite that they have approval, probably.
In the deed, do you think --
You can --
I don't -- I mean, I thought that you had to take a vote here at the planning, because it's required by the permit, and then you need to have a record of that vote, and it needs to be --
It'll be in our minutes.
In your minutes, once you approve them. Then that means I'll have a record that you approved the ownership transfer. But you'll need the information.
The satisfaction of the condition would be in a future minute.
Okay, okay, good. All right, that's what I thought you would probably have to do as a procedure. All right.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
So we may not see you on the 28th.
Well, I'm not supposed to be here. I'll be in New Hampshire.
You're not going to be here.
I'm hoping you do not be here. You may not be here as well, some of you.
I'm beginning to sound that way.
But I just wanted to, you know, have at least a vote for the concept of the transfer, and then give you the information to have. You can send it out, and then when you do meet again, you can take that second vote, I guess.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas, too. So, the next -- our 7:15 hearing has to do with 475 Adams Street, and I see --
We didn't have to citizen speak, is that okay?
What?
Can you do citizen speak later?
Yeah, let's do it right after we do this.
Okay, sounds good.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ned Corcoran here, on behalf of 131 Elliott Street, LLC and the Conleys. I submitted on Friday for your package, two plans. One was a site plan prepared by Bob Hannigan, that we think is correct in terms of shifting driveway, et cetera, and a set of architectural drawings that, unfortunately, I understand there was a miscommunication between the Conleys and the architect, and the plans, that those plans are incorrect, and we need to resubmit. So I'm going to request that the board continue this until the 28th.
If you're lucky. We'll do it. We'll continue it then, but this is -- let's see, what are we continuing? This is a site plan. We could do it with three members.
Okay, so the 28th. And I apologize, I got off -- the Conleys are away. I got off the phone with them late this afternoon, and they just thought better to wrap it together and come in with the right combination.
Are we agreeable to continuing the matter of 475 Adams Street to December 28th, and if -- we'll see what happens then?
Yes, as long as, if there are any people who came out tonight, I don't mind hearing from them, so they don't have to come out again.
Well, they probably will want to come out again. Is there anyone here who has anything to say about 475 Adams Street tonight? Well?
Maybe not. Okay.
I guess that handles that.
Okay, I'm amenable to --
All right.
I won't be here, so you can do anything you want.
So continue until the 28th at 7:15?
Okay.
Now, citizens speak. Any citizen --
Thank you, Ned.
-- resident with a matter of that they feel we should hear about should come up and tell us.
And it's anything that's not on the agenda, right?
What?
Anything that's not already on the agenda.
Right.
If it's on the agenda, then you can talk about that.
Right. Although 333 Brushhill Road is -- we're going to continue it.
As a citizen, you want to do a citizen's -- To talk about an item later on the agenda, then I suppose you have to open at 8 o'clock to continue 1065 Brushhill.
When do you want it to go to? I mean, we'll do that.
January. Like a night in January.
The 9th of January, okay.
The 9th is a Tuesday.
The 11th.
The 11th.
The 11th of January.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've -- we're working on it, but we're not -- we're still bringing it together.
Right, so you're working on legal issues, which is what lawyers are supposed to work on, not other issues, not design issues. That's what architects are for.
And so he's going to continue that one until January 11th?
I guess you get to be 7:30.
Perfect.
We don't have any public hearings scheduled for January 11th yet, so it could be 7:15.
Okay, let's do it at 7:15.
That'll be great, thank you.
All right.
And then, lastly, I understand, I did see a letter that you prepared in support of 120 --
Have people looked at the 120? This is something we agreed to send to the Board of Appeals. Why don't you take a few minutes and look at it, and if you're agreeable, we'll sign it and give it to Lauren to give to the Board of Appeals.
The hearing is -- we've applied, we have filed the application for the variance. The hearing date has not been set. Sometime in January, I understand, but they have not set a date. And last night, it was before the Historical Commission, and they also voted a favorable recommendation of support with respect to the property at 120 Central Avenue. The property, the house is an 1885 house. It is on the Historic Register as a contributing structure in the Columbine Rocks Historic District, and it, you know, sits on a -- it's got a very prominent outlook on the rocky outcropping on which it sits.
No, I think it's -- it just provides out for a variance personally, but --
Thank you.
We're going to need multiple copies signed.
What? No, there's just one copy that we need.
We only need one. We'll give the original to the zoning board, we'll take and make a copy for the file.
It looks like April is on board.
Yep.
Denny?
I'm sure I will be. I'm just the slowest reader of the bunch. I was listening to Ned Corcoran, so.
I ignored him while I read.
I did, too.
Most people do.
No offense.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
I'll deliver it to Mary. I'll email you a copy of it.
Now I know where to get you. You're easy.
I was going to assign you number two, but you're number two anyhow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy holidays to all of you.
Happy holidays.
I won't see you before. See some of you back on the 28th.
My turn now. Thank you.
Okay, now.
So I have one citizen speak. I'm going to give -- Cheryl a hard time. Her daughter danced at halftime of my daughter's basketball game, two weeks ago, at Connecticut College. It was pretty cool.
Oh.
And he sent me video.
Are we going to watch it?
That's up to her. She might be embarrassed. She might -- they're both probably embarrassed, and I just made this statement, but I just thought it was a pretty cool thing, when we walked into the gym, and there was Christina with the dance team, ready to participate at halftime, and it was really a good, really quite a thing.
That is cool.
And Connecticut College won the basketball game that night. Yeah, my daughter plays basketball, so.
On Connecticut College?
So the Camels won, and it was a good night football, the fall around.
Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
That was a good thing.
All right, 333 Brushhill Road. We're waiting for 7:30, which is when the Milton Marketplace will -- hearing will start. 333 Brushhill Road is on for continued hearing tonight. We have the plan, Engineers Plan Survey has been completed, and it's been sent over to the engineer, the original engineer, for review, and we'll have it at our next meeting. And we will have our architect instruction. We're going to make suggestions as to what exactly how we should instruct the architect to do a landscaping plan, and we're going to ask Mr. Ute and the developer to submit any thoughts they may have, and then we'll hopefully come up with something good. So that hearing is going to be continued, and is anyone here regarding 333 Brushhill Road? Come on up. We're in citizen speak, and since we haven't limited it yet to particular, to exclude these issues, we'd love to hear from you now.
Julie from Champsing Barracat, 366 Truman Parkway. So I just, I came in because I wanted to know if any progress had been made, but you just made it clear that you're going to do the follow-up at the next meeting with me?
Yes.
Okay. So in the interim, I did, I was in contact with Lauren. I sent you some pictures tonight. I'm sorry that it was so late, of the trees, the fallen trees at the back of 366 on the line with 333, for you guys to see what's happening with the trees. In addition, I forwarded emails to you from 2015 that I had sent to Mr. Clark regarding my concerns and demanding, really, an impact study on my property, stating at the same time, and you guys will see the emails, that perhaps I would be the one that was most impacted, so I really needed to know what was happening, and again, voicing my verisimo for us, where is my language? Concerns that I had never been notified that, you know, this construction was going to happen so very close to my property. So I never heard anything that. So I wanted, you know, we talked about this several times at these meetings, that I wanted to give you the concrete evidence of such, so that you have that there. And, you know, of course, I would love to know if there's any way that we can get that developer to, you know, to sort of assist us in what we have to go through with this driveway and with the damages that have we've incurred at our property. You know, I've heard from people, people have sued the town on such things. This is not the route for us. We are town of Milton people. We stand Maritown. Everybody makes mistakes, you know, and what we would like is if you, if there's any way you can get them, the folks that didn't do what they were supposed to do, to, you know, take part in assisting with that, that would be incredible. But, you know, that's, I guess that's where we stand. But moreover, my main, you know, concern is, overarching concern really, is that this thing never happens again, when special permits are given to these developers, that folks like me, little folks like me, don't end up paying a price. So that's the commitment I want from you guys.
Well, you have it from me.
We're certainly going to do everything that we can to ensure it doesn't happen again. Now, we're in the middle of a hearing on a amended special permit, and once we get the survey and the engineers' report and the landscape architect's plan, we will then be in a position to fashion an amended special permit. But that is the, that is what we're working on now. These, the survey, the engineers' report, and the landscape architect's report are all pieces of the eventual amended special permit, and we will, your issues will be And, but we probably should write them up, just so that we are on the same page with you.
That sounds awesome, and in addition, I think the process, the follow-up process, I think another neighbor spoke about this, you know, really tighten up the process of how you monitor your recommendations to these people, because they obviously find loopholes and ways not to follow through on your recommendations, so.
And I want to reiterate what April said the last time you spoke, that we can't thank you enough for coming forward and letting us know that these issues were arising. This was at the beginning of the summer. You were my second meeting as a planning board member, and I've learned immensely from this project, unfortunately, but I have learned a lot by fire. This was one of the hardest projects I can recall, and your concern for your neighbors and for this process and improving it has really, really made a big difference for all of us, so thank you.
Well, I'm happy to hear that. I bet they're not that happy.
Well, no, I'm actually also thrilled to get the background on the correspondence, because the devil's in the details, and we've got to get the process.
Precisely, yes.
We've got to get the process more transparent, more understandable for the public, and, you know, more crisp, and no fuzzy gray areas. It's got to be really clear what's expected of everyone, so this is helpful.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alex, may I, before she leaves?
Yes.
Julie, do you mind, before you leave? Do you mind? I just thought, for your benefit, to hear a suggestion. In terms of scope for the landscape architect, can we arrange that the landscape architect have a site visit with the immediate abutters, so that their design considerations can be taken into account?
We can, indeed.
Okay, so I'd like to suggest that we do that, so that, and maybe the immediate, your neighbors, your immediate neighbors could do it at the same time, so that it can be an efficient use of the landscape architect being on site?
Okay.
If you're willing and interested in doing that.
Sure.
I think that that's something that we can do, and we'll probably make you the point person.
Okay, that sounds great. I can certainly jump to my neighbors.
See, that's what you get. You get a lot of work when you come in here.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, we've got our first suggestion about instructions to the landscape architect.
And it was a good one.
All right, that was, let's hope they're always that good. Okay, anyone else? As I say, we're not going to, we're continuing 333 Brushhill Road till 28th?
I hear you on the 28th. I have a question on the 28th.
Oh, but this is a, this is a special permit, so we need more members. I think we need four members.
Need four.
So we're going to have to continue it till January. But we can discuss the instructions to the landscape architect.
Yes.
On the 28th, but the hearing will be continued to?
The 11th.
The 11th. Which is fine, because we would continue it on the 28th anyhow, because of the fact that we wouldn't have anything from the landscape architect.
Right.
Okay, so. So, 333 is the 11th.
What time?
What was the, we've done one 7:15?
We have one at 7:15.
And that's, uh, so this is 7:30?
10:63.
What?
Eight? I'd say 7:30. I mean, I, you can, I'd rather have them tighter than looser.
Right. Okay, 7:30. And 4:75, Adams Street is the, is the 28th?
Yes, that's correct.
At 7:15.
At 7:15.
And 10:65, Brush Hill Road is the 11th at?
7:15.
7:15. All right. Milton Marketplace parking structure. Why don't you come up and tell us about it?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. My name is Michael Modestino and I represent the trustees of the McNosa 1983 Trust. Michael McNosa is with me here. I think you know Michael. This is an, I also have Michael Beck with me. He's the Vice President of Sales at Park Plus, and they're the manufacturer of the parking stackers that we're asking for approval on in the Milton Marketplace parking lot. It's an application for approval by the planning board, bless you, of an accessory structure in the parking lot that's greater than 800 square feet. It's approximately 1,200 square feet, a little bit under 1,200 square feet. The proposal was to build 10 units of parking stackers that would house 20 vehicles in total. It would be for employee parking only, not for the public, not for customers. And it would be monitored by security officers that are in the parking lot on duty at all times. Again, the public or customers would not have any access to the units at any time. The parking stackers are manufactured by Park Plus Inc. of Fairview, New Jersey. They've been at this for a number of years. And I've submitted a full description of the, of the product. The units are powered by hydraulic power. They utilize biodegradable vegetable oil, and they have a heater for colder months so that the viscosity levels don't get too high. Don't get down too low, I would say. It's housed in a structure, well, the, the unit itself is three feet by three feet, and it's going to be housed, if approved, in a shelter that is approximately six feet by four feet. The noise level, and I'm going to have Mr. Beck address that to you. I know that there was some concern by the public about the noise level, and they've done some testing on it. The decibel level is 59 or 60 decibels. It would sound like a telephone ringing or normal conversation. I've submitted a landscaping plan last week, and hopefully it's in your packet, and it includes the planting of 12 new trees, arborvitae's, that will be 10 to 12 feet high. The landscaper tells me they grow approximately one feet a year. They'll be trimmed, obviously. There'll also be 22 hydrangeas, hydrangea plants in between. This will help muffle any minimal noise that's coming from the, from the machinery, and it will hopefully shade the equipment from a visual standpoint for the residential neighbors out back. The pictures that I've submitted of existing conditions show that there are trees back there that have died. And what happened there, I guess, was they were planted about a year ago. They weren't watered enough, and they're going to be replanted. And there's going to be, I, I think there's some kind of a sprinkler system that's been set up back there, so that won't be a problem in the future. I know that there were some concerns by the public over safety and children having access to this equipment. There is a cutoff switch. There's a velocity switch. The power pack has a lock, and every machine has a, has a key switch. No one other than security or employees of the Milton Marketplace would have any access to the switches or keys. When not in use, they'll be flat, they'll be down. And I think there's a picture in the package that shows what it looks like when they're down. If not, I can, I can show you one. The hours of the store operation are 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and I think on 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM on Sunday. So nothing is going to be used after 8:00 PM, and it's more likely that we're not going to be using the stackers after 5:00 PM. And the hope here is that if we have an employee in the store who's there for, you know, eight-hour shift, a 10-hour shift, they're going to park there, and then, and then it's not going to be used again after that. And, and certainly it's going to free up some space for customers because customers tend to stay an hour or less, and, and now we're going to free up a lot of time. I know that there's concern about height. It's my understanding that the height of this equipment is approximately nine and a half feet. The structure itself, if we have a sedan on top of a sedan, it's going to be about 10'6". If it's going to be a sedan in an SUV, it's going to be about 12 feet. If we had two SUVs, one on top of another, it'd be about 14 feet. I can tell you that that's not going to happen. We're going to, the fruit center is going to make sure that there's not going to be SUVs on the top level. Basically, this is an attempt to obtain some relief from the parking crunch in the square, in, in this particular parking lot. It's not a huge relief, but it is some relief. I do not believe it will be offensive or noisy to neighbors. It's for employees only and not for the public. It's a safe system, and it's not going to be subject to any children or teenagers trying to play with it or operate it. It will only be operated by security officers that are on duty and employed by the Milton Marketplace. And I'd like to have Michael Beck perhaps explain some of the safety features and the noise levels that I've briefly touched upon. I know he's put together a package for everybody here.
Thank you. Thank you.
So in the package you have the brochure for the 1903 double stacker. Pretty much provides the, um, the overall dimensions of the, of the unit. And as Michael said, um, the height of the, the leg is nine foot six. Now, these are, are adjustable, so if, if ownership decides to, or they will mandate who, which employees work on these, you know, park on these lifts, we can adjust them to a lower level to have an, have a sedan below and a sedan above. So realistically, you wouldn't be going above 10'6". Again, the, these are hydraulic. They'll be powered by vegetable oil, so it's biodegradable. There are velocity fuses on the cylinders. There's two cylinders on each machine. There is a, you'll see a yellow pendant that's coming off of an operating arm that has a key switch. The, the state of Massachusetts mandates that these do have a cutoff switch on each operating arm, and also velocity fuses which, um, control the speed of the unit. It's very important to understand that it takes about 10 seconds to raise this machine and 10, 10 seconds to lower it. So if an employee comes in at 8 o'clock or 7 o'clock in the morning, the machine will actually only be used for 10 seconds. Once it's up and it's locked into place, depending on what time the employee goes home, that machine will not be used. So with 10 machines, and they all come in, let's say, within a 20 to 30-minute interval, there really is no noise coming out of the, out of the unit. So the power pack is, is a separate unit from, from these, these machines. As Michael said, they'll be, it'll be housed in a self-contained, uh, structure. There is a 10 horsepower motor with a, um, 60-gallon reservoir below. We use vegetable oil because it is biodegradable and it's, it's environmentally friendly. So if there is a spill, which typically there isn't, um, then there is, there's no environmental impact to it. The, the power pack itself will be housed away from this unit. It'll be roughly, if you, I don't know if you have, bring up the, the site plan again. That one, yeah. So the shaded areas are the 10 units, and then to the right, there's a, where the building structure is, the unit will be just where, just to the right of the hash mark where there's, where there's no parking. So it is away from, from the unit. Again, in the evening when all the employees have left and the machines are lowered, on the power disconnect, there's a, an arm, a switch that the, um, security will close. You put a padlock on it, and no one can raise and lower the machines during after-hours. The, um, in the package, there's, there's two studies of noise levels, and I've also provided to you a decibel chart. And both, uh, studies show that it is at 60 decibels or below, 59.8, which is, um, a normal conversation. So again, this, these will only be used for about 10 seconds in the morning, 10 seconds in the evening, and it is a very low, uh, low hum when they're raising and lowering. And I've also provided to you a cut sheet of the power pack and what it looks like.
Is there any reason why you located them there rather than, say, next to the LSA vertical granite curb? Rather than a?
The center portion there, Mike.
That area there?
Yeah.
It's, it's certainly open. We figured we wanted to keep them away from the building where the trucks back into the dock area there, so we wanted to keep them away from there. But certainly they could go on the island. It's, it's open for, for debate and, and discussion.
Okay, do we have questions by the board?
I do. So are these devices in place in other cities and towns in Massachusetts? Or would this be?
Yes, we have them in downtown Boston.
Are they in parking garages?
They're, they're both in parking garages and outside. We, we put 60 of these into Mass General Hospital for the Wang Center, and they're basically used for outpatient and visitors. So they go up sometimes 30, 40 times a day. But they are, they're, they are in, all over Boston, and, um, they are in, um, in Brookline, and they're in Chestnut Hill, and I believe they're in, um...
In Brookline, like?
Yeah.
Where?
In Brookline, well, they're, they're, they're indoors at Harvard Medical School.
Are there any ex, outside?
Yes, there are, there are some at the, um, on Route 9 in Chestnut Hill. There's roughly a dozen outside. And, um, and again, at, at Mass General Hospital.
And they can work in inclement weather?
Yes, they can. Yeah, there actually is a heater inside the power pack. When you turn it on, then the, the heater will heat up the, the vegetable oil. Typically, when there is a snowstorm and they, you know that the snowstorm is coming, what you do is you raise them up so the plows can clean the area. And of course, below, the, the snow really won't accumulate as much as it would if, if there weren't any lifts there. And then after the snowstorm, what you do is, um, after it's cleaned off, you lower them halfway, you shovel them off, and then the plow comes around again.
If a kid got under one of these things, um, would that be the end of the kid when it was going down?
Well, they're, well, again, each, each employee will have his or own key, uh, operating, and once it's up and locked into place and the key is shut off, then it will not come down. There's a, there's two safeties on either side of the leg, which, uh, two hooks go into a channel, and nothing's going to bring that down, um, when it's, when it's locked into place. Of course, you know, the, the big question is, you know, when you are lowering and raising it, that, that there are people that, other than the operator, not around. So, you know, it is a machine. It is a hydraulic machine, and, you know, when you're using machinery, you just have to be careful.
So at the other locations in Massachusetts, is it a similar situation where the employees have their own key, or is it a valet?
Employees, yes, yes. It's all valet. And again, the employees, um, the state mandates that there, there is a key switch on every one of those yellow pendants for each machine.
But will there be an individual maybe assigned to your business who's responsible for this, or every bagger and stock person and whatever has their own key?
No, so our security, uh, staff would, would have the keys, and they're the owners would have the keys.
Okay, and so it gets clarification.
And they would operate the machines.
How many, um, employees, like, the employees that you anticipate using this, are they full-time employees who would be there, like, in an eight-hour typical workday?
Ideally, yes.
Okay. And then, have you thought about, I mean, I was just looking up the HUD guidelines for noise, and they're, they have a goal of exterior noise levels not exceeding 55 decibels in residential areas. I was wondering if you thought about an attenuating fence at, at the, um, next to the landscaping so that could attenuate some of that noise that might go towards the neighbors?
We hadn't thought about it. It would certainly entertain that, and if that would help, uh, we would do it.
You know, like, the, the kind of thing that, well, this is, what's on highways is obviously a little bit bigger and more industrial-looking, but it's the same concept, right? That it's mitigating noise from the highway to the residential neighbor. I think there's, there are definitely things that you can get that are used on buildings. They, um, they don't have to be as industrial as that.
Well, the, the power pack, the decibel reading is, is the power pack standing alone. This will, so that, that's the reading when there is no containment shelter around it. So there is going to be a soundproof shelter around that, which will lower the decibel reading.
There is around the whole thing?
No, in other words, the...
Just the power pack.
Most of the noise comes from the power pack and not the lift itself.
Yeah, yeah, the lifts don't, there, there's no noise. When they're raising and lowering, the, the noise is coming from the power pack itself.
But there's a clanging of metal when things hit.
There's a, there's a locking system that you, for a second or so, it locks into place. But there's, there's no noise that would wake somebody up or, or, you know, take somebody out of their, their chair.
So if one wanted to go hear one of these, where's the nearest one that one could hear the noise that's actually, in person?
Certainly at, uh, Mass General Hospital.
Whereabouts?
It's at the, um, the parking lot on, um, I believe it's on Putnam Street.
It's an outdoor lot? Or in the garage?
It's the outdoor lot, yeah. It's on Charles Street, actually.
You don't know how the, those are operated, right? Obviously, it wouldn't, wouldn't be much benefit if we go and there's no one operating them, right?
Well, they are used Monday through Friday for, you know, for patients.
And staff operates them?
There's a full, full staffing, a valet staffing company that operates them.
Would you be able to reach out to that, uh, that owner or that operator to find out if, if we could arrange a site visit?
Sure. It's certainly doable.
I wanted to applaud the creative efforts here because this is something that we really need to be creative in our, in our town, and especially this area of the town. I, I did receive an email from, from one of the residents who was concerned with a lot of the things that you mentioned, the safety, um, appearance, and the noise were the three big bullet points. And when it comes to the safety, I am concerned because it is a, you know, it's a little bit of a busy area. I know in my own home, I have a pet and a dog and a cat and a, you know, kid and a this and that. And, um, you know, I was so grateful when they came up with that invention, when you're closing your garage door, there's a little sensor. If somebody runs under it, luckily the, the garage door stops. Something like that would be a little bit reassuring for me. Only because, you know, a kid could chase a ball or, you know, anything could happen. And, and the idea that it's, it's going to be moving for a period of time and not, you know, that, that does concern me. The appearance isn't great. And, um, and I would, and it's budding people's backyards, in their very small backyards. So I am concerned about the noise. So I'm interested. You're on to something. I, I want to hear about more mitigation of these efforts, and I'd love to hear from the public about their thoughts on this, especially the people who live closest.
Yeah, I, I didn't, I failed to mention that I, I do appreciate, too, that you're trying to address parking issues, and, and, um, and I think it, it is unfortunate that parking spaces take up so much land area. And especially when they're parked all day for someone who's at, at work. So I think if it is what you say, and that these cars are going to come in, people are coming in to work and they're going, so they got a concentrated short period of time that they're in operation, they're there, and a short period of time when they're all leaving, that that's... leaving, that that's, in terms of how, what the noise impact might be. I think it, it's not as if it's going to be all day long, people coming and going, so...
Realistically, these lifts should be used twice a day.
Yeah.
Up and down. Because at the end of the day, you don't really need the parking. It's, it's the first, you know, three quarters of the day is when you, when you need the parking. And like I said, other than, you know, purchasing land and creating more parking that way, there aren't that many options out there, unfortunately. So just throwing it out there and seeing what happens.
And we've tried to do that. You know, we tried to acquire a lot a couple of years ago, and there was some neighborhood opposition. We listened to it, and we backed off from it.
Yeah, yeah. And I did notice that we did receive an email from another business owner in the area who applauds us and endorses it. So he's very supportive. So I, I am interested to learn more, and I, I do think we have to be creative.
Mike, if I'm not mistaken, when you're lowering the vehicle or raising the vehicle, you have to hold the switch, correct?
Yeah, there's a...
If you let go of the switch, it stops.
There's, for argument, it's a dead-ban switch. That's what it's called. So when you, when you press it down, it goes up. Pardon me, if someone is in the area that, I mean, I don't foresee, you know, someone, a child's ball running, you know, rolling under, under it. You would just take your finger off and it stops at that point. So as we said, it's, it's something that's going to be used for about 10 seconds a day each, you know, in the morning and the evening. And where they're, where they have been placed, it's probably the, the least traffic area in that whole marketplace. You know, I mean, everyone's been there, everyone shops there, you know, everyone knows that when you drive into the drive, you know, into the parking lot, and you have a stroller, you have a child, whatever, there's a lot of cars driving around looking for parking. And that would be a, a lot more open to an issue than having these operating the way that ownership has, has mandated.
Right, so we hear from the public. We do have some written material, but we can hear from people who are here first. Anyone want to be heard on this application? Yes, sir.
I'd be interested.
Why, come on up, come on up and make, make some room up here.
Who is going to install this equipment?
Introduce yourself, speak into the microphone, please.
John Walsh, Milton resident for the last 45 years. And my only concern of this, about this proposal is, is the, is the installation of the equipment. And, Mr. Beck...
The installation of the equipment is performed by a licensed installer in the state of Massachusetts. Once they are installed, they are inspected. There is an annual inspection of these units, and there are, there is certainly paperwork and follow-up every, every year. But these are installed by a licensed installer. And, and actually, these are, these do follow the elevator code. So it has to be a licensed elevator installer.
And you have a relationship with a...
We have relationships here in Massachusetts, yes. Yeah. I mean, we don't, as a company, install these in Massachusetts, but we install them everywhere else in the country.
Well, that, that was my only question because you could not legally install them in the state.
No, we don't. No, I know that.
Okay.
Who's your installer?
Uplift or United Elevator. There's several installers.
You've got an elevator company that...
We have elevator companies that do this, yes.
My only concern, it's been answered. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I actually... Go ahead.
Can you just tell us a little bit more about that annual inspection? Is that the Board of Building Regulations?
That's for the state.
Department of Public Safety?
That's the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Annual inspects, and they have...
The annual inspection, they do have a certificate.
Like in any other elevator, it has to be publicly available.
Correct, and the certificate is, would be in the marketplace, correct.
I did talk to the building inspector, and the building inspector did say everything that Mike just said. Yes, it will be inspect, it has to be installed by an elevator company. There is a special permit going through the elevator code. So yes, it is the Department of Public Safety. But he came back with that this afternoon, so...
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi. I am Mike Flancy. I am 88 Antwerp Street, so our, our backyard butts the Fruit Center parking lot. Just first off, the, the Fruit Center's been great neighbors for us. You know, we attended a meeting three years ago, and, and, you know, it was, I think it was great. I think it was a dialogue. And so when we hear, heard about this, we just want to be part of the dialogue. We, we have a number of concerns which have already been sort of mentioned. One for, for me is pulling onto and off of the ramps. I imagine, you know, several-ton car pulling onto the ramps, it's going to be louder than a conversation. I mean, it's just obvious. Another concern, you mentioned children, did want to draw the board's attention, too. There are a lot of kids that play actually in the, there's a forested, forested space back there. And oftentimes, when there are snowbanks, kids are sledding there all the time. It's...
Is this where it says stockade fence?
It's tough to see, I don't...
Actually, I can...
Yeah, yeah. So it's back there. So it is away from the structure, but I share your concern of some sort of automatic safety. I, you know, I don't think we can really gloss over that. I think that's a major concern. Another concern is sightlines. From, from our vantage point, our house, house and our kitchen, we can see into the park, the parking lot. Parking lot can see into ours. If this, this did go through, would really appreciate that the town, the Fruit Center, supporting some sort of evergreen planting or, or growth, you know, trees to block out the noise and, and the visual. Because they would be, I think for all the neighbors around, peering into our kitchens. And so it is a residential neighborhood. Again, the Fruit Center, probably go there three times a week. We, we love the Fruit Center. And it's just, I just wanted to voice a few concerns. I don't know what else I can, it's a copy of a...
And where, where, the evergreen plantings would be?
Along the stockade fence.
Along...
Yeah.
In the back.
Yeah, between the, between the homes and the, and the lifts.
But you're talking about adding some on what would be the left side of the plan here? Is that right?
Yes. Is that what you're referring to?
That what you're suggesting?
Our house is actually face is...
Here, his house is down...
We're, we're actually on Antwerp Street, so we're...
Oh, I see, okay.
So if you, it's looking across, you want something to keep you from looking across the parking lot.
Yeah, or from the parking lot from looking across to us, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
So...
Is there a fence to the, to the left, you know, where the kids play in the snow? Is there a fence or anything preventing...
There's a six-foot stockade in here.
Six foot?
Yeah.
There's a six-foot stockade right here. This fence over here is inside their property line.
Yeah.
There are some trees on the backside. You'd think it was the neighbors, but they're actually trees that belong to the Fruit Center back in here.
Is there a fence along that line?
There's a fence all the way around.
All the way. And is it six feet?
Yep.
Yes.
And are the kids playing on the other side of the six-foot fence?
Especially when there's a snowbank, they're on both sides.
Oh, yeah.
Because of the snowbank.
Great equalizer.
Yeah, yeah. So they're, they're over the fence. And, you know, honestly, we just kind of hear them, you know, they're not our children, but...
You know, they're there.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for letting us know about that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Also, we do have a snowbank.
Okay, who else? Yes, ma'am.
Would evergreens help that while the kids play?
Hi, I'm Audrey Devon. I live at 94 Antwerp Street, right up the street, three houses up from Mike. And my house is probably directly across from, as you enter into that center strip where the cars come in, where the trucks come in, where the trash trucks come in. And it's like a steady stream of activity all day long. And then you add the noise of the cars going up and down. So it's not just a 50-decimal noise level, you put it all together and it's even louder. I spoke to Mike last week, or the week before, about my concerns because right now I have no screening in my backyard to prevent anything. I see everything in the backyard. I sit at my kitchen, island, I have a large window in the back of my house, and I see everything. There's nothing to prevent it. I don't want to see cars high up in the air. There is an eight-foot fence, but it doesn't cover anything. You know, it doesn't protect you from not seeing everything that's back there because our first floor is raised, and we're almost at the level of the fence. So that's my main concern is the appearance, the noise level, and then the safety. And I know the Fruit Center has been great. They take care of any concerns you have. I'm in the Fruit Center probably every day. I know parking is an issue. They park on our street because they don't want to deal with driving into the parking lot and trying to find a parking space. But I don't think that type of a structure is meant to be dead center in a residential area. I've seen it at Mass General because I go there all the time, and I've seen it for the valet parking, and it just doesn't seem like it fits in our neighborhood. That's my concern.
So is it fair to say that you're raising the issue of more landscaping is needed along the back of the lots off Antwerp Street?
I think that there would have to be a lot of landscaping, and it's going to have to be very tall landscaping. A fence would have to be at least 12, 14 feet if you don't want to see anything. And I know a lot of my neighbors feel the same way that I've talked to. So I don't think there's any way to hide that structure.
Do you think that that structure would be an eyesore?
Mm-hmm. I do. I hate to go against Mike, but I just, I just can't support that. I just can't.
Have, I'm sorry, the, your mic, right?
Three mics.
There's a few mics.
It's a little bit confusing.
These have gone in garages, right?
Yes.
Are there any other regulations, like, if there were to build a structure which would screen it at the location instead of screening the whole property? If you built a little garage around it...
There are applications around the country where they put roofs over them, and they do enclose them on three sides and putting overhead doors in. That's not going to preclude you from, from seeing a parking structure. I mean, you're going, you're going to see something that's 15 feet high, that's a steel structure, if you wanted to hide the vehicles. So you're really not doing anything to mitigate the, the sightlines.
Well, the, it's potentially an alternative to trying to screen the whole parking lot on three sides, right? Nothing to think about, I guess. And do, do you have children?
They will.
Are, are your kids, they're all grown up, but they grew up? Did they play, did they play in that area over there?
No, they never played in the back there. When my kids were little, the Fruit Center just, I think, just started in their neighborhood.
Really?
Yeah, yeah.
That's when my kids were born. So before that, it was all woods, and then that got turned down. So my kids were never in that back lot.
Okay.
But there are kids back there. They built a little fort in the trees. There's a cutout from that back area into the parking lot that, you know, older kids are going through all the time. There's no way to prevent it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else? Okay, why don't you tell us what we've got, Lauren?
Sure, so I have two emails here. I'll start in the order I received them. The first is from Peter Dunn at 84 Franklin Street. Dear Chairman Whiteside, my name is Peter Dunn. I live at 84 Franklin Street. I'm writing to you today to express my opposition to the plan by Milton Marketplace to install elevated parking devices in its parking lot. As I have pre-existing commitment this evening, I may not be able to attend tonight's planning board meeting. I wanted to get my views to you via email. I have met with the Fruit Center's owner, Mr. Michael Magnosa, who is very open and willing to listen to concerns of the neighbors. He is a responsible business owner and a good neighbor to us. Nevertheless, I am not in support of the proposal for the reasons stated below. First, I understand that the lift in question is the Park Plus Model DP 003. Here's a link to the video showing it in operation. He then includes a link to a YouTube video about this. Second, I understand that the plan would be to locate the lift in the rear parking lot along Franklin Street property line. As you can see from the video, the lift is loud when in operation and appears to lift the top car to a height of about 13 or 14 feet. My primary concerns are as follows. One, safety. There are many, many children in the neighborhood. Many kids go back there, and this could be very attractive to them. Mr. Magnosa said that there is a lock on the mechanism that operates the lift and that the key would stay with the security guard who would be the operator. Also, the lift would be in the flat-down position when they close. That said, the security guard will not be there all the time, so there could be a risk of curious kids on the device during the day, attractive nuisance with the attendant risk of mishaps falls. Two, appearance. This is not an attractive structure. Given the street layout, basically neighbors knew from the lot from three sides, and especially when the leaves are off the trees, without very good screening, we would be looking out on a garden of cars 10 feet in the air. Perhaps some screening is possible, but any screening implementation plan should address the 270-degree view if the neighbors and, of the neighbors, and take the seasonality into consideration. Three, noise. As I understand it, there's not any decibel information on the lift currently. You can judge for yourself the YouTube video and how loud it is. I find it to be overly loud. Mr. Magnosa stated to me that they can put the power box anywhere and can insulate it to make it less noisy. I think we would need to have a better data on this before being convinced. Mr. Magnosa did state to me that they could govern usage so that early employees would not be using it and that the usage would be later in the morning. This is appreciated. All that having been said, I feel that we should have much better evidence of the noise impact and the effect of mitigating steps before further consideration. The parking lot is zoned residential and operates by special permit. This further usage is not appropriate. I thank you for your attention to this and ask you to deny this application. Sincerely, Peter Dunn. The second email is from Paul Travers of Travers Insurance at 555 Adams Street. Dear Mr. Clark, I will be unable to attend tonight's planning board meeting in regards to the Fruit Center's proposed parking. I think finally someone in the town has found a way to increase parking with a great idea and should be accepted with open arms by the board and the town. Mr. Magnosa is a great neighbor and an asset to the East Milton area as well as to the town. When I heard of this idea, I immediately looked at it for a project I am doing and found a great solution to my problem. As a member of the Milton Business District and a resident of the town, I wish to endorse this idea. Please, if possible, inform the board of my opinion. Yours truly, Paul J. Travers.
Now, who else wants to be heard on this? We, this apparently is a special permit, and so these elevators, these auto lifts will have to be approved by the Board of Appeals in an amendment to the special permit. Would that not be a fair statement?
I think that's a fair statement. And when we requested Mr. Prondak, the building commissioner, to approve it, that was his initial reaction. And then his subsequent reaction in the denial letter dated September 19th was that he felt that it was a matter that should go before the planning board because it's a request for an accessory use of a structure over 800 square feet. So that's why we're here. I thought we would be going the other route myself.
Well, I've got to say that I agree with you. That it seems to me that even if you are putting an accessory structure in the parking lot, you'd still need to get a special permit amendment, wouldn't you? I mean, that just seems to me, I'd, I'd be interested to see Mr. Prondak's letter, but...
I have it, I can...
It's in here, yeah, it's in our packet.
I think that just appeared today.
What? It just was here today, yeah. I just saw it, too. I just read it. It's in one of our materials.
Right here, in this.
Oh, it's in this.
Aha.
In the packet.
Somewhere.
Oh, in this packet?
Here it is.
It's at the cover.
Oh, right, okay. Oh, right. Okay.
You got it?
Lauren, can you pull up this in a Google map just so we can see? Trying to see it on my phone, but it's small.
So they're saying there's a use variance and the design of the thing is simply a matter of site plan approval. That's what I, how I read it. And he may be right. That's too bad.
April, where do you want to go?
I just want to see the orientation, the same as the plan that we just had up with Antwerp on the bottom, so we can see the proximity to the homes.
Sure. Antwerp's right to the right, ah, left, I'm sorry, to the left.
Can you just swing it?
Can you rotate it now?
No, you can't. Okay, well, that's okay.
Who owns the wooded area that...
Private property owner.
Okay. It's not associated with one of the homes there?
No. That's the lot we attempted to purchase three years ago and we were hoping to expand the lot.
This is their, this is their access point?
Yeah, is that a built-up lot?
Yes. Owned by Mr. Paul Babcock.
Lives in Weymouth.
All right. My suggestion would be as follows to the board, that we have been held a televised meeting, which I assume a number of interested people have watched. And that even if they haven't watched it, once they're told that the meeting has occurred, they probably would watch it. We have some public opposition to these. We've got some questions. I think that we should take a site walk at the very least. And then see whether or not we get at our next meeting, probably, it probably would be the January meeting, see if we get support from the public or further opposition. And at the same time, the fruit center has heard a number of comments about what the issues are perceived to be. And it might consider whether or not it feels that they can be addressed. So that would be my suggestion, that we continue the matter to January 11th and continue the hearing then and do a site walk.
So are we going to do a group site walk at MGH parking lot?
I think everyone should go shopping at the fruit center and...
Oh, I want to...
No, I think, maybe we could do it on the 28th. No, but some people aren't going to be here.
So I'm, I've never been, that's why I was sort of interested in seeing the plan because I always park, I think, right behind Audrey's house. But I've never been around the bend there, so... Give me a wave. I've never been around the bend, so this is helpful to see the proximity to the homes. But I'm actually really more interested in seeing one of these in action at MGH.
At our meeting?
I don't know. I mean, we can do that individually.
There is the YouTube video that Peter Dunn sent us.
I just want to see it from standing on the ground so I can get a sense of what... I mean, my kid, again, everybody's applauding you for thinking outside the box and I do as well. But I have three small children, so I'm sensitive to the neighborhood's concerns about kids. But I also have, it's hard for me to visualize, so I'd just like to go and see one of these exterior, because I've seen them in parking garages quite a bit in downtown, which is apples to oranges really. And I can do that on my own if we get some direction, I guess Monday through Friday. We can go anytime, or if you want to do it as a group, but that would be very educational.
I'm inclined to think that since we're missing one member and we've got Christmas arriving, that we'd better try and do it separately.
Okay.
And I think that we have a pretty good idea of what we want to look at.
Yeah. And I think we can probably all go individually up to the fruit center tomorrow or any day and look at the area in question.
And certainly see, Michael, he would show you exactly where it is.
I do have another question, Mike. About how many of those parking spaces do you think are pretty much staff-only during the day? And which part of that lot in the back there? All of it?
I mean, we provide parking for the Penile Cleaners, CVS, The Plate, The Nutshell, The Gift Garden, T-Ben, and ourselves. And it's about 75 to 80 cars, or employees, I should say. All of them drive. And it would vary from weekday to weekend or holiday or non-holiday in terms of how many employees are actually in the building. But it's substantial. It takes up pretty much the entire parking lot back there and it works its way up the side.
Have you thought about doing tandem parking spaces such that if you had a group of people who were going to be there all day, that you could manage that by having them parked in? Like, for example, if you come back out a little bit further, Lauren? You know, if the majority of this is staff and a lot of, this is probably some service turnaround through here, is that right?
See, that's all our deliveries.
That's the livery entrance.
And the delivery is all day?
Pretty much till about 3 o'clock, 3, 4 o'clock typically. And then everyone's...
And then what's in this zone right in here?
Is a drainage pit. So it's filled with, mostly with gravel. But we're required to have that as well.
That's too bad. It would be nice if you get tandems in here that were dedicated and you could pick up those 10 spots. And it just might, or even consider whether you put the stackers there, just because it's proximity to the abutting properties is a little different. Understood about the comment across here. Maybe you could address that with more landscaping. I understand there's a fence there already, but...
And you can't stack because, on the gravel, because of what?
Stormwater's underneath it.
Yeah, so? It's crust stone, isn't it?
Well, even if you didn't...
You wouldn't pave it, but you would...
Yeah. I was talking about putting them here. The idea of the tandems, I guess, yeah, would cross it, but...
You put a bunch of spaces in the back with, of course, a row of arbor vitae.
So both sightlines of the houses won't see it.
What was, just out of curiosity, what was the opposition to additional parking in that open lot?
The neighbors really just didn't want to look at additional, an additional parking lot, another paved structure. And that's been a wooded area for as long as all of us have been here. And I think they appreciate the fact that it would, hope that it would stay wooded as opposed to paved. And there was a strong opposition against that. So we decided it wasn't something we wanted to pursue.
I think they wanted it to remain vacant and it's not. You know, Mr. Babcock has contacted us recently. He had some title problems over that property. His attorney contacted us and that property is going to be for sale very soon. But our concern is we'd run into the same problem with the neighborhood. And that's why we have not gone forward on that. And we've thought about everything. We've thought about valet parking.
There was a plan for rain gardens and there would have been rain gardens on the other side of the detention base in Now. And there would have been more parking behind it. So they would have left the vegetation going around. There were a group of landscape architects and architects, engineers maybe?
Yes.
From town that came in with a plan and they were floating the plan before it had to go for permitting. And it met the neighbors and...
We had a meeting with them and there was clear opposition to it. And it was an expensive project and we backed off from it at that point.
How many spots were you going to pick up?
There wasn't many.
Well, I think it was 20 to 25 maybe, but it would, yeah.
Because you weren't going to pave the whole lot.
Well, most of it would have been paved, but obviously the perimeter would have been landscaped.
Is there even room to put evergreens around the periphery?
There is. There's maybe a six to 10-foot bed that, between where the car, the lot ends and the fence is. So, and we have trees and bushes and arborvitae there now in various places. They certainly, so there's certainly room for more and larger plantings.
Good, good, good. Your idea about maybe putting it in the middle might help with the sound, being away from the residents a little bit, possibly.
But it wouldn't help with the visuals.
No, the visuals, no. One thing is, do you have...
But it wouldn't help with the visuals looking.
Middle is yes.
Are there trees in there?
There are bushes.
I mean, that might be one thing to help address these neighbors, right? If you had more landscaping in here.
I think there isn't, it's not a very wide strip of land, so it would be hard to put anything large, I think, in there. I think the only way to do it really with the perimeter of the lot is the only place where we have enough soil to be able to plant anything large.
And you're absolutely sure that your widths of your aisle and your turning radiuses don't allow you to re-stripe a little bit in there?
So it's so tight back there now that we can't use some of those parking spots because the trucks can't make the swing. So as it is now, there's at least two spots that we have to block off so the trucks can make the swing around the corner.
So what do you think? Shall we continue it to the 11th?
Sure. Just one last request. If there is some kind of need to have a time arranged with management of the Mass General parking?
Yeah, you're probably better off going to Chestnut Hill.
To Chestnut Hill.
This way, and I'll, you know, provide you with the address.
Okay.
Because, I mean, to get down to downtown Boston is a little bit...
I am already in downtown Boston daily, so if it's possible, that actually would be more convenient for me. So maybe give us an option of either one. That might be better.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah. I'm good.
All right, we're going to continue it to the 11th and we don't have a time yet. But we're going to give you a time.
7:45?
7:45.
The next available time slot.
7:45. The 10, 11th at 7:45.
Thank you for bringing, thank you for bringing gentleman, Mike, number three for Park Plus. It was very helpful to hear from the vendor to get some specifications.
Now, so yes, thank you for, thank you for a very interesting and thorough presentation. And thanks, of course, to the neighbors for coming out on this cold night. And hopefully we can...
Thank you.
Further discuss it and come to a agreeable result.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for holidays.
Thank you. You too.
Now, 1065 Brushhill Road was scheduled at 8 o'clock and we are continuing that until January 11th at 7:15. And we did discuss 333 Brushhill Road. And Lauren tried to call Mr. Udi today to say that coming in didn't seem like a particularly productive use of time. But we have, the plan has come in and we've sent it to the developers' engineers for review and it will be available on the 28th.
Could I request that I get a copy, a PDF copy of that survey?
Yep.
Thank you.
Can we have one too?
Of course.
I haven't got one yet. Did you just come in?
No, I'm just saying I'd like to see one when it's available.
When it's available, okay.
The report came in and I talked to the building inspector and he said, "That's great, but with any, anytime you do this, you need to have the answer from the other side, what the issues are." So I sent it immediately to CEC and I'm awaiting their comment. Awaiting to get it till 4:30. I sent it to CEC at 4:45 and I talked to Alex at 4:50.
I just mean, once they review it and it seems, I just would like to take a quick look at it and then that might help me think about what the landscape architect's scope of work could be. That's all.
I think that that seems perfectly reasonable. We also, for the 28th, are going to assemble thoughts on the directions that we are going to give to the landscape architect. And we're going to solicit your suggestions as well as the board's suggestions and anyone else's suggestions. And we are going to create instructions to the architect. And one of the instructions is going to be that he is going to meet with the butters and discuss the landscape. So that's what we did. And then we indicated that when it came up at 8:15, we would continue it to January 11th at 7:30. But David, seeing that you're here, it seems churlish to send you away without hearing from you.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. Thank you. I did get a call, a voicemail from Lauren today, apprising me that a plan had come in and that you would be discussing perhaps direction to give to the landscape architect. We also wanted to give something to the board that we just received today. If I can just pass this around, it's one page. And if you wouldn't mind, just quickly upload, there's just some pictures I just wanted to show you guys. We hired a drainage engineer of our own to come out on the site because there have been continued complaints and issues with the butters. And you guys have heard from some of those here. And we just, we're kind of at wits' end to know what's going on. So through the context of the litigation that we have with Mr. McKenna, McKenna's entities, we asked that, we have the right to inspect the site and to have our expert, come out to do an inspection. And it was actually, it was actually a very rainy day, so it was a good day to do the inspection. And it was done very recently on the 22nd of November. And we got to observe the system and what's going on. And if you bear with me very quickly, if you remember, if you remember from the system, you have the plan, you have the roadway going through, you then have the three units, and then you have the butters down the hill, right? So what the engineer found was that, it's contained on his just one-page report, he's going to be doing a more detailed report for you guys. Among other things, like the tree removal being more than what was shown on the plan, he talks about that the roadways and driveways have been paved with asphalt binder course, but the catch basins that have been installed on the roadway, because there's no top coat on the roadway, the lip of the catch basins is a couple inches above, so it's not catching any of the water as it should, which is expected because the binder course still isn't on there. The catch basins at the low point have this filter fabric on top of it, which is appropriate, but the fact is that they're clogged with debris. No one's maintaining or doing anything with them. So you could see in the pictures, the water is just pooling on top of them. And then there's a pipe and stone trench drain that's installed at the downstream edge of the open area. But what's happening is because the grading around the perimeter of the pipe was insufficient to keep the trench intact, you just have water pouring down the hill past the units to the butters. That's exactly what's happening. And that's what we saw and that's what the photos show. And there's, I brought a thumb drive if you want to look at them on the screen, but the photos have captions of what's happening. We also include in the photos basically an example of a temporary kind of basin that our engineer is like, at every single construction site that he's ever been to like this, you have a temporary basin to catch the water before the system's actually working. And that's, there's no sign of that here. It should be in, you know, between the units and down the hill by the butters to catch this water that's pouring onto the site so that the water's not going onto the butters. So I just wanted to bring this up to you because yet again... So I just wanted to bring this up to you because yet again, and I know I sound like a broken record when I come before you guys, the credibility of this, in our opinion, this is my opinion, of this developer and his contractor who have come before you time and time again and said, "Everything is, you know, everything's fine, everything's going great." You could just see from these photos in a very, I think, objectively-written report with no exclamation points or adverbs, kind of just matter-of-factly pointing out what's going on here. These are really simple things to address if you have a good and workmanlike way of doing things. And these poor people, the abutters, have been coming in here time and time again saying, you know, "Our property's being deluged with water." You can just see in the photos what's happening here. So I just put this before you. That's why we've been so insistent on.
We're going to put this before the engineer that we hired.
And I'm happy to make Mr. Riley, our engineer, Mr. Riley, available to share his findings.
Oh, that'd be good, because I would anticipate our engineer would want to talk to him.
Yeah. So I just, I'll finish, I'll be done in less than a minute. From a credibility standpoint, I just want to keep hammering this home with you guys that the things that are supposed to be done on this site are not being done. And the people who come in on this side of the V from this developer who tell you things are being done appropriately, and everything's fine, and hydro seeding will solve the problem, it's not, in our opinion, true or credible. And we've had to now go out and hire our own engineer and through the, because they won't let us on-site, they'll call the police if we go on the site. So we had to, in the context of the litigation, request a site inspection through their attorney, have our engineer go out on-site and see this stuff so that we could photograph it and bring it to you. It's like pulling teeth. So going forward, when all these issues have to be addressed, like landscaping, drainage, all these things that are supposed to be done right, because clearly the town, no disrespect, does not have the bandwidth or the know-how, maybe, of the people that they're sending out to see what's very plain and evident. I just ask that you, from a credibility standpoint, that you maybe trust a little bit, but verify because what's being reported to you guys about, you know, "This is impossible to deal with until more things happen," is not true. So I leave this with you guys to think about. I look forward to being involved in the process going forward to try and remedy this with the independent experts. And we're happy to make both our arborist available to the landscape expert and our drainage expert. We'll have a more detailed report to you guys going forward. So happy holidays.
Well, I think the drainage expert is important because we have been told that the drainage system is up and running.
It's not.
Great.
It's not.
And.
You could literally see.
The picture, the picture that, the picture of the, of the basin, the rim of the basin being two inches above the pavement is, would indicate to me that the drainage system was not actually up and running. So, but we have, now have an engineer who's responsible to us, and so we're going to get this material over to him. And we have, maybe we should continue this to the 28th.
And I know it's winter now, so that there's not a lot of running water, we may get some warmer months, but.
No, we don't have to. We can discuss the report outside of the hearing on the 28th.
But these temporary measures are important. I mean, if you get some warm days, and there's snow melt, and there's things happening.
We will discuss drainage outside of the hearing on the 28th.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything, any questions?
Is it okay that if you only have three members, I mean, I could call in if you needed a fourth?
Well, discussing, you see, discussing it, it would be outside of the hearing.
Okay.
It would not be, it would be discussing, it would be like discussing the SWPPP, the Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan, which has never been implemented. But maybe that's what we'll do. We'll discuss the SWPPP on the, on the 28th. Yes.
I feel like we need to revisit the process. This sort of needs to be gone over with Mike Dennehy, Joe Prondak, the whole thing. I think this.
What is, what part of the process do you find?
Well, we had a town engineer say that things are fine, which I don't think the town engineer should even.
I don't think he did, he said that, did he?
Did he say the, do you recall, Bill? Town engineer?
Somebody reported back to us that the storm water system was, yeah, the drainage was working.
And the cloth was fine, everything was fine? Is that right?
It was built as designed.
It is built as designed. The, the system with the, with the catch basins, the catch basins are there, they're built as designed, the cul-de-sac field is there, but it's not functioning for the reasons that I've indicated. So it's like, it's only a half, not to say someone was lying to you, but it's a half, it's only half true. It's not, there's no temporary means in effect till the roadway goes in to the system to work, and no one's clearing out these filter fabrics or putting in an, the real problem is if you go through these photos, Bill, if you wouldn't mind scrolling to the last one, because I don't know if this is in yours, but what should be in there, so you can just see, keep going to the very end, Lauren, please.
That's the last one.
There should be a detention basin.
Actually, could you, could you go back to the attachments, like clothes out, yeah, exactly, Alex? So if you go to that top thing.
This?
Yes, please. So that's what there should be. There should be a basin, it should, not necessarily that size, but there should be a temporary basin between the units and all this runoff. If you, because if you can imagine the site, you have the road, the units, and then the neighbors, and there's a big hill. So there's no basin that, I mean, according to our expert, and I'm not a drainage expert, it's like it's construction 101 to put a temporary basin in effect. Any engineer looking at this should see it as plain as day because all the water is going zooming towards this, the hill, and nothing is, the catch basins don't work yet because they're elevated over the road, and the trenches that are dug are just overrun. You could literally see rivulets going, like these huge fissures going down these hills, directing water, channeling directly to these people where they live. And you should have something there to catch it on a temporary basis, and there's nothing.
Unless they lower the, lower the drains by two inches so that they're at a level with the.
They're working.
At a level with the rough pavement.
So our guy saw.
Or put in the final pavement.
Right. So our, my expert saw this in five minutes on a rainy day. So all these poor, I feel bad, like all these poor people coming in here saying, "What's going on? What's going on?" And then Larry Nevin, the Irish gentleman, coming in here and saying, "Everything is right, everything's fine." Like, it's clearly not, and it's not that complicated as to why it's not. So this is what we've been going through with this developer since day one, all these issues with trees, drainage, you name it. And I would suggest to you that one of the most immediate things that the planning board should consider is commanding this developer to put in the temporary measures that whatever the independent expert does or maybe adopt. I'm happy to bring our engineer in, you can ask him temporary measures, because when this stuff starts to thaw, these neighbors are going to be deluged again with water going down this, going down, because it's, he's not going to put the roadway in anytime soon.
Well, I mean, design, it seems to me that just lowering the drains so that they work is.
Or putting in a basin that will catch the water.
I mean, there's a basin called for now.
What's that?
If, no basin is needed in the final plan.
It's a, no, no, Alex, it's a temporary thing that you do, that you fill in when you're done with construction, but you put it on a temporary basis.
No, I understand, but if you lower your drains so that it, the final drainage system is as, is going to catch the water, that you shouldn't need a temporary basin.
I think it's a belt, from what I've been told, and I'm happy to bring Sean in, it's a belt and suspenders approach. I mean, you want those catch basins doing what they're supposed to be doing, but because all the curbing is included and all, and the trenches between the units and the roadway are in it. It just overruns and goes in. So I'd be, I'm happy to bring Sean in if you want to speak to him.
Well, no, I think our engineer needs to report on this.
Well, that's, don't we have BSC group doing some storm water review? Who's doing our storm? So can't we just ask them?
Our person?
Yeah.
Absolutely, we're going to ask our person as to what, I mean, if he says what's there is not sufficient, which is what he looked into.
Both permanent and temporary measures.
Yeah, it's the temporary, I think, that Mr., you're talking about really.
Correct.
And as far as the neighbors who've come in over and over again.
The developer says we put in the final so we don't have to put in a temporary.
Well, it can't be final if the road is lower than the.
This was two weeks ago, these pictures. It was two weeks ago.
Well, it does seem to me that we need our engineer to report because there's, we can't require a temporary system without knowing how it's going to be designed.
It's, it's not a huge design issue.
I understand, but we still need, we need, we can't just say, "Dig a hole," and we're going to want an engineer to give us a design. It may be a simple design.
Yeah.
But we, we want that design. And I think that we should continue the whole hearing until the 28th. And, and then two people can watch it on, can watch what happens on, on the tape.
Would I have the ability to call in to the hearing instead of be here?
You're going to be out, too?
I'm going to be in Vermont. That's my plan, at least.
All right, let's just discuss the SWPPP on, outside of the hearing on the 28th. That is, we're going to discuss the temporary measures that are necessary, and our engineer is to report to us on this. And it is too bad that, you know, but this is quite an unusual situation. There's no way we could make a rule that would cover what's going on here. It just can't.
So one thing that maybe we, we could ask the landscape architect and the civil engineer is, is there a way to incorporate some kind of a safeguard or backup system, like a rain garden, into the design such that if there are some problems, or even just a safe.
I think the way.
In a high rain event, that there's something at the bottom of the slope that can help catch some of the water, hold it for a little bit before it can perk down instead of going onto the neighbors. Because we still have a downslope condition, and I'm not convinced that, that it's going to be taken care of for a while until landscaping grows in, et cetera, et cetera. So if we, if we design for it in the landscape, it seems to me we'd be better off. So it's belts and, belts and suspenders, perhaps?
Yeah.
But Bill, do you think that's something that you could talk to BSC about?
Yes.
And then we can put that in the landscape architect scope as well? There's a second one, Alex.
Another good suggestion. We may not even need to meet next week, next time.
This is excellent, okay.
And can I ask one last thing that, for you to consider? Can you please connect your drainage expert with Sean? Because he'll just give that person all this data and share his observations.
We're going to do that.
Oh, okay, great. So if Lauren emails me, I can give her Sean's information, and they can connect.
Okay, well, I mean, beyond what you've given us.
No, his information should be here. Oh, maybe it's not.
Yeah, it's on the, on the letterhead.
But we're going to give this to Sean, we're going to give this to Sean. I mean, if you've got other stuff.
I'm just saying they should talk.
I, I agree. They will talk.
Great, great.
Can you, sorry, I'm sorry. Can you provide me with a PDF version of this?
Um, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right.
Would you mind just emailing me or reminding me? I'll give you whatever.
The hearing will be continued until January 11th, and we will have a discussion of temporary storm water on the 28th.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for providing.
Now, we have a, some proposed zoning, which, why don't.
Are you cold?
Thank you.
Have a nice holiday.
Put my jacket on. Not going to run if I put it on, just so you know. I'm not leaving.
Okay.
It's just, it's too late.
Tell us about it.
Good evening. My name is Paul Sullivan, here with Rob Celaberty. And we actually appeared before this board last year for a brief discussion about this idea. And just to give you a little history of the property, the town access road anyways, originally was the access road for the landfill, Milton Town landfill. And then eventually, the landfill was closed, and it wasn't used very much at all to the golf course. Granite Lakes was, went under construction, and it was used during the construction period. I believe they had a lease on the town access road for some period of time, but I think that's changed. The town now controls it. And then in 2013, there was a zoning article that was approved, assisted living residential development, and which would permit, permit up to 100 assisted living units. And that was on a parcel that was a minimum 150,000 square feet with access to a fully signalized light on state highway, which was, from everything I remember hearing at the, at those hearings, the, the board was talking about that the assisted living developer used, using and improving the town access road. Since then, nothing's moved forward as far as assisting living development. There's been several developers who were interested, but for whatever reason, it didn't work out. And so in 2016, Rob bought the property from Pleasant Street, this subdivision right here, from the O'Nails and from another abutter, Mr. Murphy. And he, he built that eight-lot subdivision there. As part of the, during the public hearings, the DPW director at the time requested that he bring water to the rear of the property to service a future animal shelter. And Rob agreed to do that, and he's already constructed it, and he included a hydrant at the end of it. So there's an easement that runs from the end of that cul-de-sac to the rear of the property. It's a utility easement that currently just has water, anybody could carry sewer. And so this year, Rob and I purchased a property at 728 Randolph Avenue, which is 1.6 acres. And we discussed the idea again of, of coming back to the board and, and see if, if there was some interest in, in creating a zoning article for town meeting to, which would permit multifamily development on, on the properties along the town access road. One of the issues that came up was those properties don't have legal frontage on the town access road. If you want to, there was a restriction during the active period of the town landfill that didn't allow them to come out onto the access road. And that's still in place, so any development would have to be subject to selectmen approval for use and, use and improvement of the town access road. It's not a public way for the properties at a abutte right now. I did have a meeting with the town administrator, Michael Dennehy, and during the meeting, the chairman of the selectmen, David Burns, came in, and, and I discussed this idea with them. It was decided in the end, the best thing for us to do would be to come and present it to the planning board and put together some rough plans, just some concept plans for the board to review. So we did was, we took the footprint of 36 Central, which I was involved with, and we plotted it on this site. We put two of the buildings on, the horse farm at 704 Randolph Avenue. We plotted one on 728, and then we did a smaller version on a 35,000-square-foot lot that's on the rear of Jill Kathleen Lane, which was called at the time Lot 9. lot that's on the rear of Jill Kathleen Lane, which was called at the time Lot 9. And so we think there's a need for this type of housing. There's been several townhouse developments recently in town, and we thought that garden-style flats is more affordable and more moderately priced, and would be good for the marketplace, increase the diversity of housing options for the residents of the community. In addition, a couple of other things. There's a bus stop, an MBTA bus stop, right at the intersection of the town access road and Route 28 Randolph Avenue. And so this would be considered a transit-orientated development because of the walking distance to that bus stop. We have spoken to a few of the neighbors, not all the neighbors yet. Depending on the reaction we get from this board, we'd probably begin setting up meetings with the neighbors. There's not a lot of abutters to the properties, but, you know, they all, a lot of them were involved in the assisted living hearings, and we met with them back during that period. So we would contact them and set up meetings to present our ideas to them. But one other thing, the, it's reading through the master plan that was created, it seemed that this type of housing is something that the master plan committee had in mind, and that it would be, create a more diversity in the housing options for the residents of the community. And as I said, these would generally be much more affordable than townhouses. And so at some point, we were hoping to present to that committee the zoning article that we drafted. The, I guess, the two final things I would say is, you know, obviously, this type of denser development would generate significantly more tax revenue for the town than what exists currently. And finally, as the animal shelter goes forward at some point, the town's going to face improving the town access road to make it safe and accessible for the animal shelter. And that could be a pretty significant cost for the town to bear, whereas if there was a private development up there, the private developers would bear most of that cost of improving the roadway. So that's our thoughts on the matter. We welcome input from the board and their thoughts on, your thoughts on the zoning article that we drafted.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I see the proposed zoning article has a section called number of units, but how many units are you proposing here in these four buildings?
So the way we would set the density, it would be set by the required number of parking spaces per bedroom, and also an FAR, floor-to-area ratio. A lot of communities don't set specific unit density. Instead, I'm involved in a townhouse project in Coasette Village, and the density was set by the FAR and parking requirements and open space requirements. So those three things work in a certain direction that sets the final density on the development.
But how many are you-
How many have you drawn here?
So these represent 36 Central, which was, because of the zoning article, you could only build 21 units, but it was really laid out for 22. It had six per floor on the first three floors and four on the top floors. So that building contained 22 units. It could contain 22 units, as laid out.
These three are larger, right? So that would be 66 units?
Yeah, the other one, the other one's scaled down. It's a smaller building, yeah.
Approximately how many units it made?
It's, it has 14 parking spaces, I guess, is the way it's laid out, so.
But the zoning says that you take your, your 1.691-acre parcel, say 70,000 square feet, and if you have 1,000 square foot units, that would be 70 units on that one parcel. And presumably, you could put 140 units on the horse farm, and who knows how many on that. That's a lot of units.
Well, I didn't want to do the math, really. So I guess my question is, how many units do you want to construct?
Well, you know, it's not set in stone. The floor-to-area ratio, I think, is .75 is the one that we're working with right now on the garden-style buildings. It's also, it's the total square footage of the building. It's not the square footage of the units. So there's a lot more square footage in a building than the total square footage of the units added up. So if the board felt that .75 was too dense, then, as concept plans get developed, it becomes obvious what, you know, it'll be obvious what you think is reasonable density, and I'm sure that the ratio may get adjusted.
Is what we pick out of the air as a density?
It's a pretty-
I mean, we say .63, and that somehow is magic about it?
Well, I'm confused. I feel like there's got to be, I mean, I feel like the financial feasibility of this project. So how many units do you need to make something like this feasible under this proposal? Do you have a certain number of units that-
It's very, a very preliminary stage right now. We haven't done analysis yet. There was some discussion on the zoning article that's being prepared for Milton Village. You know, it's at least being discussed. And there were some FAR density discussions there, and I don't think what we propose is way out of what was discussed on that. But we're not, you know, it's not set in stone. If the board thinks it should be a different number, then we're obviously open to listening to that.
Why do you call it a garden-style building when it's four stories plus a level of parking on the ground, so it's a five-story cube? Why do you call it a garden-style building?
That's just a phrase that I've heard people use in similar style buildings.
In other words, to hide what it really is.
Well, I don't think anybody thinks that 36 Central is an attractive building. I think-
I understand, but it's in a business district, and this is out in the country.
It directly abuts residential zoning.
I mean, it's sort of like Quarry Hill and those horrible buildings they built up there.
No, it's not in the scale of that. That's totally different.
It's not, but it's the same idea.
Well, 36 Central abuts residential zoning directly on the right side and on the rear. The whole rear of the building faces a residential neighborhood, so it's not, it's not totally set in a commercial development.
This is right on the border of the Blue Hills Reservation, and, or at least on what would appear to be the Blue Hills Reservation. And, I mean, I don't know. You don't have an FAR, and you're, I mean, I think townhouses would make a great deal more sense than these big five-story blocks rising up over the, over the landscape. And, but I'm not sure that, I mean, there are a number of owners. There are a number of presidents. We really have to get some input from someone other than you. You're one owner.
No, I understand.
Two of you, but one owner saying, this is what you'd like to have. But there are a lot of people who live in this area. Cheryl?
Yeah, I, while we are working on, the master plan implementation committee is working with the MAPC potential overlay zoning for the business district, and we're testing out FAR that seems to make sense. The idea there is that it would allow housing above first-floor commercial. So I do think that's a different scenario than what we're looking at here. That said, I'm not, I'm amenable to considering multifamily here with the bus stop there. I do think that we have few locations in Milton that make some sense for multifamily. So I think this has some potential to make sense for multifamily. By ten, I don't think it necessarily has to be townhouse to work there, but I'm also concerned about the overall density and the overall height and scale of the building. So, you know, my sense is, you know, you're probably looking at like 75 or 80 units there. That seems like a lot to me. And I think we'd have to really understand what that scale is like, because you do have single-family abutters there in a residency district. And I'm not, I mean, there's lots of different ways to do a site plan to buffer that, but I still think 45 feet there is pretty aggressive. That's my initial thoughts on it.
My initial thoughts are, where you don't have frontage on a road by definition, that's a significant waiver to ask for from the town. And I think you may have, it would be far more receptive if you have neighborhood buy-in. And I imagine neighborhood buy-in would be easier to get if there was more open space in your approach. If you want to move families in there, I would think you'd want to have areas where they could play, where, you know, there could be activities in open space and trees to climb and so on and so forth. What I'm seeing, just quick knee-jerk reaction, because I know you're in the preliminary stages. Just, I can't imagine the neighbors being thrilled about this approach, but I'm happy to hear from them, and I hope I-
Yeah, I mean, we obviously know that anytime you try to do a zoning article, you have to spend a significant, I've done two zoning articles in town. You have to spend a significant time with your neighbors, and we're prepared to do that. We understand it's going to be a very long process. And we don't expect the board just to accept this draft article that we submitted at all. We understand there'll be a lot of public hearings on this, if it goes forward, at least first discussion. And there'll be a lot of changes, you know, after the input from the neighbors. But, you know, there was, you know, an assisted living built up to 100 units there, so it's not totally out there. There's an animal shelter. It's a pretty significant-sized building. It's only one story, but, and I think that, you know, the, we're not, we're really abutting the golf course in the town land. It doesn't really, though it does have walking distance up into the Blue Hills, it's still a pretty good distance away from this property. So, but, you know, obviously, all these things would be, all the details of the draft would be, go through scrutiny from the neighbors and from this board and from the selectmen. As far as the frontage, if the selectmen decide they're not going to allow us to use the town access road, then we can't do this development. So we're not asking for a waiver. We're either asking, you know, in lieu of us improving the road for the town, that we could have access to it and use it for frontage.
I just want to make a comment about comparing the density of the assisted living. Assisted living units are generally smaller. The parking requirements are generally a lot less because people aren't driving as much. There are some staff parking spaces, but my recollection from that article is that the parking impact would be far, far less than what you're looking at here. So I'd say be mindful of that comparison when you're doing it, that there are, that was only a three-story building allowed, I think, also. So they're not really the same thing.
No, I agree. The impact is different.
Yeah.
It's more from just the thought of multifamily being up there, you know. And the neighbors were probably more open to accepting it because of the-
Population.
Yeah, because the traffic.
The coming and going of traffic would be quite different.
Sure, yep.
Yeah.
So is this an article that after some back and forth, you're hoping that the planning board will sponsor, and if so, when? Or is this something, I notice the last page is a signature page. Are you-
No, our preference is to work with the board and the neighbors, so that the board may choose to sponsor this.
Not for May, though?
We understood May's pretty tight now.
Okay. See, I say that's an aggressive time, too. So my feeling is, similar to Cheryl, I think I'm not opposed to the discussion of multifamily. I'd like really to know more about how many units we're talking about, what the traffic impact will be. Obviously, this is a very treacherous area from a crash perspective, so that concerns me a little bit. And just the amount of impervious surface, I think, is almost a little bit alarming in this drawing, so I'd like to know, I'd like to see that softened, certainly. But I would really, really like to know more about what the neighbors think before I could have a really thoughtful discussion about it.
Sure. The one good thing it does have, and I agree with everything you said, that it, at least it has a fully signalized light there, so unlike if we came out at any other point, you know, where you're just coming out into traffic, so. But, yeah, we're prepared to spend significant amount of time with the neighbors discussing the plans, and then if it goes to public hearings, you know, go through the process of public hearings.
Well, the Carberry Estate, as you recall, was a big parcel of land. And the neighbors and the potential developer, I mean, the potential developer said, this is what I'd like to do. And then the potential developer went out to work with the neighbors. And only once there was a, the foundation for an agreement, did zoning begin to materialize. And so, I mean, you suggest that one of your neighbors may want to build 100 or so units on his horse farm, but he may not. And he may not want to be, he may have some views on this, but it does seem to me that you want the town to basically turn the access road into a public street, and so that you can do a large multifamily development. And this is a fairly hefty bite at the apple that you're proposing here. And I think that the first step is to come up with an idea. I mean, I don't think this is, looking at your 1.6-acre lot, I don't think that putting a building like 36 Central Avenue on it would be attractive, would be of benefit to the town. I don't, I just don't, don't see it. But, and I don't think you could get neighborhood buy-in for it. Saying, look, we did it on Central Avenue. We can do it here. It's a different location. It calls for a different developer. It calls for a good architect. That's what it calls for.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting we proposed to build exactly the same building that was built on 36 Central. I did it, we put it on the plan just to show the scale of it. Because people can drive by and see 36 Central. You have a sense of what the scale of the building is. And so we just use it for that purpose.
You don't have, you really haven't focused on what sort of density this area should be subject to. It's currently zoned for single-family dwellings. You want to turn it into an apartment community, and the neighbors may have some ideas. And so you need a really nice plan. And that's sort of my view. So I, you know, I could give you, I've read your zoning, and I could give you a critique, but I don't think that, I don't think you're there yet. No.
So I absolutely agree with Alex's comments on 36 Central. I love that building. I live not far from it. I think it's beautiful, but that's an infill development parcel. So that's, you know, I completely agree with you on the design. Bill and Lauren, is there a road safety article going on right now with Mast dot for Route 28? Bell and Lauren, is there a road safety audit going on right now with Mastat for Route 28 for this area? Randolph Ave?
There is...
Or a planned road safety audit?
They are working on the Chickataby intersection at the moment. We have a request in for a corridor study, but that, we're not getting too far on that.
Well, we probably can make more progress if we ask for a road safety audit. I think they can do that more quickly. You already have one?
We did, we have a road safety audit for Chickataby and Randolph Ave. We've asked that it come down the street some.
So if we end up making progress on that, I would like for them to contemplate any sort of impacts from a multifamily residential on the site, which they can build into.
And we have the traffic data from the forty B that was proposed across the street. We've asked that they come down the street. They understand us. They, we're looking at the road, at the corridor study at the moment. We have, the intersection of Chickataby and Randolph Ave is on the tip. The design is being done right now. The counters are on the road right now. The engineers have been out there surveying most of this week.
Yeah, I've seen them.
But that's just that intersection, and that intersection doesn't go down here. We've asked for this because of the amount of deaths that have taken place.
From Halen.
From Halen going to the lights.
So can we just make a note, one or both of you, that if we end up doing some sort of corridor study or if they end up agreeing to do a further road safety audit in this area, that we ask them specifically to contemplate a hundred-unit or an eighty-unit multifamily here? Because they can do that as part of their...
Further down. We've asked, but we just don't seem to be getting, we're getting the top part, because the top part absolutely positively needs to be done. We've asked that they come down the street.
So if they, if they do, I understand that they have, but if they agree to, I want to make sure that we're including this potential...
We've had legislators working on the same issue to drag it down.
And if they don't, presumably the developer would be, I mean, we'd want to, before we rezoned the land, at least this is my view, you don't rezone and then figure out what the traffic will be as a result of the rezoning. You figure out what the traffic will be if you rezone. And if it's reasonably okay, then you can rezone.
And I think that this particular area requires even a higher level of concern from this board. I mean, there's been two deaths in a six-month period, multiple other accidents. My mother was here babysitting my kids and got hit right here. It's very, very dangerous. And there's, so I think we have to just be careful about that. And if there's a way to build something in, so I understand there's nothing going on now, but in the future, if there is, it's not likely something this board will know about. So if we can just make a placeholder note to make sure that this is referenced or some potential proposal for multifamily so that we can use that process to get some data to inform our process in the future, that would be great.
So we see if there's anyone in the audience who wants to say anything about this, this idea. Anyone back there want to say anything about this idea? Come on up and...
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Gregory Zizula, and I am an abutter. I own the horse farm. I purchased that in 2009. My horse is up there. My significant other, forty-two years, and I own the horse. So I bought the horse farm to keep the horse up there and pretty much allowed people to stay up there with their horses until I could figure out how to run a horse farm. I didn't do a good job. Currently, my significant other, who's here tonight, lives at the horse farm. I visit a lot. And she maintains her horse, and there's one horse there. So it's a private residence, really. That's the main goal. Right now, we enjoy it. She's retired. And so she rides her horse. Her dogs are up there. She's breeding her dogs and living life in our golden years, I guess. But we want to stay in Milton. I also own a house on Blue Hill Ave. We built that. And so we have dual residency. The horse farm is beautiful area. Overlooks the Blue Hills. It's quiet. It's a lot different than Blue Hill Ave. And I've always listened to developers and people that are interested in the property. And the assisted living zoning program did go through. Took a few years. And we have not been able to finalize any deal. I've spoken to many people over the years. It took, I don't know, a couple of years to get the approvals done. And that was here, Alex, with you. And we watched as best I could. We went through those proceedings. And we really only have a couple of stipulations. Is we want to keep the horse up there in that area and then have some kind of a residence and a place to, a stable and some type of paddock. The beautiful thing about that property is, is that you can ride right into the Blue Hills. You don't have to go over any main roads. And it's, I think it's the last property in Milton where you can just ride into the Blue Hills. So it's pretty cool because Lenore rides her horse with the two dogs and people see her. She's just riding through the Blue Hills. The two dogs are there. They see all kinds of nature. You know, she loves it. We've worked hard our whole lives. And this is just a phenomenal place to live. And so we, we just want a place for the horse and a place to live. In the wintertime, you have to be there because you have to take this horse in and out three times and feed the horse and horseshoes and the vet, pump out the septic, deal with the manure. So it's a full-time job, but it's a passion. So always, I've wanted to keep the horse there. And I don't need six horses or twenty-five or whatever was there. It's confusing and it's hard to manage that. And so it's taken almost ten years to get to this point. The assisted living people, by the time that project, everything was approved, there was like this assisted living boom. There's a couple of facilities out there. I think it's Brightview is a huge facility in Canton. And that was designed, permitted, and just a huge facility off of, I guess, Washington Street. Is that, if that's it. Used to be the Sand and Gravel Company. So it's a big, huge pit. They built this gigantic facility. And so that was pretty much completed when I'm talking to these assisted living companies. And I think I've talked to most of them, all the major ones in the area. And a couple of months ago, I was still talking to a company out of Philadelphia. And there is facilities in Dedham that the people that are interested in Milton own, and they just put that together. So they're monitoring their vacancy or capacity or, you know, because it's a business. They need to keep these...
Are you suggesting that there's a lot of assisted living out there?
Well, there's none in Milton. And, you know, I always believe that Milton is its own community. I live here for a number of reasons. And it's, you know, it's a very desirable place to live in the United States, but it's an aging community.
So that the zoning we have in place might be used?
Oh, of course. It's only been out there for a few years. I mean, it's taken me nine, ten years, almost ten years, to get to this point. So we just haven't found the right company out there that is willing to invest at this time. I mean, I tell them, look, we have to keep our horse there. And they say, well, who wants to live next to a horse? And I said, well, not me. That's why, on my house, I don't have my horse there. I have the horse up at the farm, which is where the horse goes. So, you know, it's, they all know that in the beginning. And they go, well, we're going to give you all this money. You're really not going to keep the horse there, are you? And then I say, yes. And they shake their head and they walk away. But that's the reason I bought the property. Everybody knows that. I mean, I'm...
But you think it's doable? In other words, you're saying that the assisted living, that zoning is not, that is a doornail, and that rezoning for something else may be a bit premature?
Well, it takes a long time to get this, you know, permitting and everything go through. If assisted living people told me today, I want to buy this, they just go in and get their permit and they're building. As long as they don't kick Rudy to the curb and, you know, give us a...
Do you think, do you think you could make, Rudy is a...
The horse?
Rudy's the horse, yes.
The horse.
Don't pick on Rudy.
You think that there could be an accommodation made so you can have the horse and assisted living?
Yeah, absolutely. But it's an investment issue. They are looking at all the facilities. And they know Milton, they want to come to Milton. The timing is everything, because by the time that all of the approvals were done, Brightview was built, then you had a Dedham facility, then you had one in Canton that's actually, again, another person that's interested. And they didn't say, no, no deal. They just need to make sure that, you know, we're not overloaded in the area. And Milton, I mean, the people in Milton, the people that I've talked to said, Milton wants their own assisted living. And the people that, you know, they want to be local. And we have an aging community. So I think the idea is right. I think assisted living allows you to have a community that doesn't require more schools. It's self-contained. You have the bus, you know, it's great.
Okay, so in any event...
Nobody has, you know, said, yes, we'll go into a partnership with you.
No, we understand. But you just say that the zoning is out there and it might be, it might be used.
Right.
But, and I don't know what you think of this proposal.
Well, here's the thing. I got an email and it said, we could double the value of your property if you take a look at doing condo development or something like that. And this is very, very early in, I guess, the, it's just concept at this point. So of course I'm going to listen to it. I'm not going to oppose it. I'm just looking to gain knowledge. And as we're doing that, we're enjoying the property. But I believe anybody that would develop the property, and I have worked with Rob Celebrati, I tried to buy that property next door from Frank O'Neil, and I came here and I offered more money. And, you know, I had said to Rob Celebrati, if you're going to develop your homes, realize I have a number of horses there and I need to know every day what you're doing. Because if a horse gets spooked, it runs down the street and hits a car, it's going to kill those people in the car. And I, you know, I don't want that issue. So you have to tell me on a daily basis what you're doing. And I need to know kind of what's happening for the week. And I know people laughed at me, you know, one attorney in particular.
You made this point when you were here last.
Right, and I'm going to tell you something.
You need, you needed notice, but now you've produced the number of horses to one.
To one. But during that development, Rob Celebrati did what I asked him to do. He contacted me. He was always available if there was any issues. And I will tell you, horse people are highly excited. And they, they're animal people. They care about their animals. We never had one complaint, ever. Not even, we heard something. We're not sure what it is. No horse was ever moved away from the side where Rob Celebrati was doing the development. So, you know, I kept an open mind then.
Is it still open? Are you still prepared to discuss with him?
Oh, I just talked to him. However...
So you still talk to him?
However, right. So I, if no assisted living company comes in and meets my objective, it's not just paying for the property and giving me money. We want to live there and still, and it's a large property for one horse. But these assisted living people are monitoring the...
The situation.
Right. And they haven't said no, but it is a business. And they know the horse has to stay there, and they know that they have to partner with me.
And you guys are talking.
Yeah, and so with Rob Celebrati...
Right, so that's all, that's all we want you to, that's what we would like you to do.
Right. And that's what I'm, so I am not opposing this, but I haven't seen really any numbers. Today I got an email...
All right. But you've heard what we said, and we're suggesting that more numbers and details are imperative.
Oh, absolutely. I have no idea. I do know if they're putting condos in there, I'm sure that they'll sell me a condo and give me a place for my horse.
With a stable, a condo.
It doesn't, one horse doesn't take up a lot of space and, you know, but we do love the horse. The horse is the most important thing in this whole development. So, but what I do want to do is, I will attend every meeting. I was not able to do that with assisted living. I got some information today that I don't think it really matters, but I just want to get this on record. I have actually not been able to talk to Rob Celebrati. But it's confusing because I own 704, 706, 708, and 672. And I went back to my deed. I have it with me because on all the plans, even on my tax bill, it doesn't show that, however it is, it is on my deed. And on this plan here, it shows 704 on this, and there's three or four different plans. This is the first one I have that's actually complete. I got it tonight.
That puts a few buildings on your land.
Well, yeah, but the, it shows seven, this is, I'm not nitpicking, but it shows 704. But the letter says, we are the owners of 706, but I'm the owner, nobody else. I'm the owner of 706, but he doesn't show 706 on the plan. So I just want, I don't want people to get confused over this. I also own 710.
We're going to assume this is conceptual and we hear you.
Okay. So I am not opposing this. And it could be a good situation for me. However, I have let Rob Celebrati know, and he agrees. If assisted living comes to me and makes me an offer that I can work with and make me happy, I, that's my main goal.
Okay, good.
Nobody's done that yet.
All right.
Sound good?
Yes. Keep talking.
All right.
All right, who else? Do we have someone else in back there who would like to be heard? If not, we will, we will finish this discussion. We'll let you sum up, Paul, quickly.
Thank you. As far as the horse farm and Greg's property, you know, if the numbers are wrong, we'll correct them. You know, if Greg decides to build, you know, to work with an assisted living company, that's fine. That's, that's his preference. And we have no problem with it at all. And we, we're really just focused on the other properties. We, you know, obviously kept Greg informed because it would affect his property. But it doesn't exclude him from going forward with an assisted living company if that's what he chooses to do in the end. So, but we will, we heard what you said tonight and we will work with the neighbors and spend some time with them. And then at some point, we'd like to come back and talk to you again.
Okay, good. Anything else from the board? All right.
Thank you.
So thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Interesting, interesting proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, anything else that we need to address tonight?
Well, I have a question. When are we going to talk about zoning?
Ah, the 28th, I guess.
So when are the warrant articles due for May? January?
January 8th.
January 8th?
Yeah.
What? So Alex and I will decide what's going on the warrant.
I have, I wrote to Tim. Today, I emailed the head of the Conservation Commission, because we haven't, we have a leering, a section of the bylaw that really needs to be brought up to date, having to do with conservation. And that would be a wonderful thing to have. And last October, I said, "We won't put this on in October. We'll give you till May." So we're hoping that the Conservation Commission will come through on that. We will have our temporary sign article on. Cheryl is, I don't think we'll have the Milton Village zoning on. That's what I don't think. Miracles happen, Cheryl.
We want to keep pushing that along. I agree with you that it's not...
It seems unlikely.
It's not going to likely be for May, but we, I think, had a very good public meeting. Jenny was there. Alex was there, and there were like, there were about 50 or 60 people there. The online survey went up, I think, a day ago, and Bill told me right before we came in that 33 surveys were filled out just today. And there were, I think, 45 that were turned in at the public meeting. So we want to let that public input, you know, continue to come in. We do have a master plan implementation committee meeting next Tuesday. We'll be discussing what we heard, what the input is from those things. So it's likely the fall.
Likely the fall, that's right.
That survey is available on the town's website.
Very good, thank you.
There is a SurveyMonkey survey there. If you take it, we'll get the results all added in. So anybody else that wants to do it, townofmilton.org. Down the bottom of the page, there are three or four news items, and one of them is the waterfront study. There's another one below it for complete streets, that there's a Wiki map attached to it, so you have problems in a certain area, click on it, add in your items to it.
But we do recognize that the reason that the October meeting was initially proposed was they say, "We really need time to do these zoning articles," and they just kill late May, early May. So we'll have a few, but I don't think we're going to have a ton of them.
Abundance? Okay. So the reason why I'm asking is because I'm very interested in the corner of Blue Hill Parkway, which I call the Food Mart Corner. As many of you have probably seen, the Knights of Columbus building has been gated off for a number of years, three, four, five years maybe. There was a request before the Board of Appeals for a variance to make that a residential, a multifamily residential project within the existing structures. That was rejected. And since then, the building has sat vacant. There's two structures. One was the Knights of Columbus building, non-conforming use, and one is a single-family residential. And as time goes on, I become more and more concerned about what this is doing to the value of the neighboring properties and just the neighborhood as a whole. So I ended up reaching out recently to the owner of that parcel to try to do some due diligence and find out what the plan is and if anything is being planned. And the owner has informed me that he is very much interested in doing a residential project there. The site is only 16,000 square feet. And from what I understand, though, I haven't reached out to the other folks, the other owners on that corner of the Food Mart and the Auto Body Shop have no intention of really doing anything with their parcel. So the idea of increasing the size of that corner to a size that would be sufficient to create a planned unit development is highly unlikely. So I don't know what tools are available, but I would very much like to have the conversation with the board at some point, when I can get some more information on that site and more information on the history and how to perhaps proceed. So I'm putting this in as a placeholder for a future time.
A placeholder.
I don't believe this conversation will be firmed up enough for the next meeting, but maybe it will be.
That's December 28th.
If I make progress in the next day or two, I might ask for an agenda item.
Are you going to be here if we discuss it on the 28th?
I'm planning to be here, Alex.
All right. We're going to make it an agenda item.
Terrific.
We're not going to give you a specific time to be here, though.
That's okay.
Alex, if I could request that we think of, begin to talk about in January, perhaps, what we might want to accomplish in October, for October semi, because it gets upon us very fast.
It just, you know, it just, in May, the summer is there. We can't do it in the summer.
Right, exactly. That's what happens. And we've heard in the past that people prefer that we not have our public meetings so much on big things that would change Milton that way in the summer. So I just would like to...
Or near Christmas time.
Yeah.
They don't like that either.
So if we could think about that, and a couple of things that I've mentioned before that I still would like to throw back out there, since we're throwing things back out there, is our stormwater regs. Like, if we could look at how we might encourage more green infrastructure. I've had conversations with Bill about that. If we could work with our town engineer, so that we're not building such big structures that requires to take down so many trees on site, that we can do more rain gardens or other things. And then, along with that, with smart development and our roadway widths and so forth, because we're doing lots of waivers, I'm just wondering if we want to take a look at those? Like, do we want to look at our...
Standard width?
Yeah.
It's 26 feet, I think.
I know, but some towns have it such that if you have...
All the different types of streets.
Different types of streets.
Yeah, we can look at that. That's certainly a, if we did that, it would be a progressive step.
Yeah, I just think those things, you know, then we...
I don't know that we can, how much, the stormwater regs are DPW regs?
They are. Actually, the engineering department is reviewing those, rewriting those right now. There is, Hillary should have a draft of it available shortly.
Oh, good.
Make sure that we get it.
Okay.
I just know that on these, many of these subdivisions that we've looked at, all of these topics come up, and we look at our regs, and then we look, we're asking people to do things that are different than the regs, and we're accepting things that are different. So it seems to me, let's get our regs in line with what our real intentions are going, have been going towards.
And one more placeholder, although it may be more than a placeholder. Since Brian's not here, and I know it's very important to him, I really think we need to talk about infrastructure mitigation funds that he was looking to create.
Yeah, it would be nice if we could get an example of one single community in which there were such a fund.
I know there are, so I'll just look into it myself.
Let's put you in charge of this and discuss it on the 28th, because Brian's...
Oh, gosh. You're skipping Christmas, kids.
Brian hasn't produced any of these things.
Okay.
So what happens, Brian, when you're not here?
Yeah.
I know, we're going on vacation, and she's stuck with all the work.
I know. I really do, really agree with Brian, especially with all the private activity that we're seeing, if we're missing an opportunity.
Except for the fact that whenever someone does a development, we insist that they hire a bunch of experts for their development. And this is on top of that.
Yeah, I know.
Well...
We know that.
It's...
Yeah, but that's what every other town does.
No. Well, we don't know of any other town that do it.
I know of plenty.
You're going to...
I don't know what their official capacity to do so is, but I work on a number of projects that have mitigation payments.
All right. We will know more on the 28th.
Yeah.
This is excellent. Now, anything else?
That's plenty for April 28th.
I'm not saying a word.
I'm actually another word. I'm going on vacation. I feel guilty saying this.
Well, I will be here on the 11th. I should inform you of that. I will be on a cruise.
All right.
And I can't phone in.
All right. So I think I heard a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? We've got many seconds. All in favor, Brian?